All right. Excuse me. I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Wall.
Here.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Present.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Accounted for.
That concludes roll call.
Thank you. Next is public comment. Do we have any? Anyone signed up for public comment?
We do. We have Dale Jeremiah. You'll have five minutes at the podium.
Thank you very much, Mayor Matsumoto Wright, council members. Hopefully, you've seen the pictures in the email I sent this afternoon. The first picture is concerning a view looking north from where the viewing platform is going to be, and you'll see how secluded it is. So, you know, I would hope that before you make a final decision, you'll all go down there and walk together and say, is this what we want to do? Are we concerned about crime? There's also a problem with garbage on the fishing pier, and the same problem will happen here. There'll be garbage there that won't be picked up and... So, the next slide, the next picture I have shows of where I think we should spend the money, and that's looking east from the new footbridge to the playground. Now, there's no plan in the master, no master plan program for a trail for that little segment. But if we could just put a paved trail there, all of a sudden, people from Edmonds on the Inurban Trail can walk through the park, over to the new bridge, over to the playground, over to the fishing pier, over to the light rail. So then, the third picture is from the 2015 master plan where the viewing platform has estimated a cost of $60,000. And that's by the same folks that now it's two and a half million. So, I would hope that, you know, don't put this on the consent calendar for next week. Go out there and look at this and say, you know, what's this place going to be like at midnight on a Saturday night out there? So, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any others?
No one else has signed up in person or to comment online, and written comment has been handed out to all of council.
All right. Thank you. Can we move on to the city manager's report?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. A couple of things to mention tonight. First, state of the city last night was well-attended, a lot of fun. Hope everybody enjoyed it and enjoyed the food as well. We do have the video published on our website now, so anybody that wants to go back and re-watch that or for any members of our community that would like to watch, that is available. Next, for, wanted to mention AANHPI, the event last Saturday. Over, close to 200 people attended, and I wanted to thank Kermit Apio, Scott Matsuda, and our own Andrew Applewick for helping to put that on. That was a terrific event. Next Monday, we're closed for Memorial Day, so we'll be closed for that. And next week, there's no meeting because it's the fifth Thursday, so we won't be here for that either. And finally, wanted to mention here tonight that we are doing the flag raising for Pride Month on June 2nd because we don't have another meeting between now and then. So, that'll be at noon, right out here on the Civic Plaza. And lastly, council asked us to reach out to the community and make sure everybody was aware of the discussion about the flock cameras that you're going to have on June 5th, and we've put that out on social media last Tuesday. We're going to do it again next Tuesday and again on June 3rd prior to your June 5th meeting to make sure we get as much public comment as we can get. And that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Page?
Just to verify, when it was put on the site for, on Facebook, for people to click on, it wasn't working. Did that get fixed?
So, the only thing that wasn't working was the comment protocol. All the other pieces were working, but we've also, we let people know that comments made on Facebook aren't public comment, and we provided all of the ways that people can make public comment, whether written or in person or online.
Anyone else? Okay. That was the end of your report. Thank you. All right. So, next, we're going to have a presentation on the annual traffic report with our traffic
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thanks for having me here tonight. My name's John Merrick. I'm the city traffic engineer. I'm joined by Gary Schmick, the Public Works Director. Tonight, I'm going to be going over the 2024 annual traffic report. Purpose of this presentation is really just kind of an informational, provide some information and discuss discussion topics, but I'll be going over the report, which really covers a variety of traffic data. I hope you find it as interesting as I do at times, but covering volume, speed, and traffic collisions, and then I'll be trying to kind of point out various traffic data conditions and trends that we're seeing. So, you know, the report is really helpful in kind of helping us focus on areas that might need more attention or where we want to look at potential future improvements and operational changes, and then can also help us guide, kind of guide us on maybe developing capital projects and going for grant funding. Looking at the report, the report is consistent with several council goals. Oh, thank you. Several council goals include growing a vibrant community, responsible governance to ensure a desired level of service, an informed and engaged community, and then environmental sustainability and resilience, resiliency. So, the first thing I'm going to start talking about is traffic volume, but before I kind of jump into that, I just want to talk a little bit about data collection and how we collect data. So, there's a couple of different ways we've done it in the past over the years. So, we currently have four traffic counter boxes that we utilize. They're small metal boxes you stretch, you use pneumatic tubes across the street, and that'll collect data, and that we can get speed and volume and collision type, like classification from that. That's great when we're doing kind of spot analysis. If we want to get larger trends of the city, you kind of need more data than that, than just these spot analysis. So, over the past couple of years, we've contracted out with companies to do kind of more extensive data collection, collecting data on, say, 15 to 20 street segments that we can then try and repeat over the next couple of years to get trends. So, we've done that, but just this year, we're going with, trying something new. We're subscribing to a data, traffic data and analytics service, and so, and there's a couple of these companies out there, but they have, they've collected data across the United States, really, from smartphones, smart vehicles, and they get data that's been kind of cleaned of personal information, so there's no way to kind of track that. And then, they aggregate that data, and then cities can subscribe and pulse that, use that data for their own jurisdiction. So, we can get, now we can get traffic, speed and volumes for any street in the city going back to 2017. So, we can really look at kind of how traffic patterns have changed on just about any street in the city. So, I think it's going to be a really useful tool. So, I've utilized that. Oh, yeah. So, I've kind of utilized that for this traffic report for these first two portions. So, the first is traffic volume, and I was trying to get a good, trying to figure out a good way to really give you a sense of how traffic volume has changed across the city, and there's not just one volume data for that. So, what I did is I selected six different street segments to kind of, as representatives of how the traffic is changing across the city. Those segments are 220th Street between 66th and 64th, 212th Street just west of 44th, 236th Street between 56th and 58th, 44th Avenue West, south of 212th, all the way to 228th, 56th between, just north of 230th, and then 66th Avenue West, and looking at kind of that section south of 220th. So, looking at those street segments and then kind of pulling the data for each of those street segments every year from 2017 to current, and then plotting those, that's the graph you see up above, and you can see it's kind of a wave trend. So, when looking at it, you can see that currently, say, 220th, that top line, we see about 33,000 vehicles a day on that street. Compared to 2017, we see, our volumes are slightly lower. But what really is, kind of points out on this is in 2020, we saw a pretty sharp reduction. That was COVID, so we saw a pretty sharp reduction in volumes on all of our streets. And so, what you see is volumes dropping, kind of dropping slightly heading into 2020, and then a really sharp reduction in 2020. And now, these next couple of years, as we see, we're seeing volumes kind of trend back up. So, and that's consistent with most of the streets. This is a pattern, and this trend is similar across the country. So, if you were to look at the volume trends in Seattle and Shoreline as well, they're going to have very similar traffic patterns. So, this will come into play as we talk about some of the next, when we start talking about some of the collision data as we get into it. So, when you look at traffic speeds, it's a little bit flipped. And what I mean by that is when you look at 2020 and 2021, speeds actually went up. So, pre-pandemic, the plot up here shows the 85th percentile speeds for each of those streets that we selected. The 85th percentile speed is kind of the common benchmark for traffic analysis, and it's the speed at which 85% of the drivers are traveling at or slower. So, if you think about it, it's kind of the bulk of the bell curve if you were to look at all speeds, and an easier way to think of it is you have 15% of your drivers that are traveling faster than that speed. So, so when we're looking at speeds, we see like, for instance, that top one, 44th, so pre-pandemic, it was probably, it was, the 85th percentile speed was about 37. Then, as we begin to go into the pandemic and the next, the following years, it raised up to not huge, but up to about 38, a little bit faster than 38. And now, we're seeing, as volumes start to kind of creep back up, we're seeing the speed drop back down. The correlation between those two could be, you know, one of the things with speeds is that drivers tend to drive the speed that they feel comfortable at. So, the more familiar you are with a street, the more comfortable you are driving on that, typically, the faster you find yourself driving. So, I find it interesting that when our volumes were low and there's probably less friction between drivers, our speeds went up. And now that we're getting that friction back, those speeds are starting to drop back down. So, some of the things that to note on this, of the streets selected, 44th actually has the highest speeds on that. So, the posted speed limit on that is 30 miles an hour. The 85th percentile speed is ranging around 37. Part of that could be that, you know, that section of 44th is four lanes, so it's very comfortable for drivers to travel. So, there again, getting back into that comfort level might attribute some of the reasoning behind those high speeds. The next one is 212th. There again, about a 37 mile an hour, 85th percentile speed. The difference with that one is the posted speed limit is 35 versus 30. So, when you look at the difference between posted speed and the travel speed, they're actually fairly close, and that's something we would tend to expect to see. The remaining streets are all posted at 30, so, you know, we're seeing 85th percentile speeds, about five miles an hour over. So, probably a little faster than what we'd like to see, but this might help us kind of focus some attention on maybe things, things we can do to reduce speeds on 44th that might be in conjunction with like the police department and some additional enforcement. So, looking at traffic collisions, looking at kind of the last 10 years, you know, in 2020, or last year, we had 200 traffic collisions. Oh, question?
No.
Mayor, councilman.
Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you go back to the speed and on 44th in particular? Would you mind, you know, you threw a lot of numbers. That's all they were to me, in other streets, but nonetheless, 44, what were the numbers that were the cross-section? Because 44th is pretty long.
It was, yeah. It was really, it's kind of a longer section that I could select for that. So, it's looking at 212th to 228th. So, that is a pretty long section.
Well, that does cover the high school, though, right?
It does cover the high school, and it covers the four-lane sections, because once you get it past, past 226.
So, going downhill?
It drops down to two lanes, right? So, we reduce, so it's a different type of street, cross-section.
Okay.
So, but I think it's fairly consistent as far as the cross-section in that area.
Okay.
You're right. It would also be associated with kind of next to the school and kind of driver behavior for that age range, that age range, because we'll see in later how the, that age group shows itself again.
Yes. And so, and with that in mind, and with the data showing that it appears to be your stretch of the neighborhood, if we will, high schoolers, maybe there's some education to be done around there.
Yep.
Funny enough, I was going to figure, how do I squeeze this in? I'm going to do it right now. I don't want to turn on my phone, but I listened to Pandora, and we've been talking about cameras, and they have this, I want to say it's called Greenlink, where they're advertising to parents to track your child's driving behavior, which is neither here nor there, other than to say, how about we just start with education before I start tracking people? So, just want to tie that in there and just say, hey, that seems like, if we didn't know this, an opportunity, and if it's not your department, where's the cross-collaboration? Because that just seems like, that number is way too high to be in front of a school. So...
And you bring up a good point, and I was going to touch on this later, but this is a good point. You know, when we're talking about focusing efforts to try and address some of these issues, you know, it's a combination. It's engineering enforcement, education. It's like, how do we meld those three things together to address, because it's not really effective to try and just do all engineering or all education, right? It's really that combination of three. So, that was, that's a great point.
Okay, Councilmember.
Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. Since Councilmember Woodard had such a good question, I just have a kind of a connected question around the speed limits of those areas, because if we look at the traffic report, we can actually see the map and kind of the areas that each of these sections represent. And I was curious, particularly when you talk about the normal speed in those areas. I mean, so, Councilmember Woodard brought up the fact that 44th has this high school there. Much of that is within a school zone. On the one for 56, much of that is in a school zone for Terrace Park. I guess I'm curious if that played into how we think about these numbers at all in terms of 20 miles an hour when children are present is actually the correct speed.
Correct.
So, these may be even much higher than they should be.
Right, right. Correct. And, you know, one of the things, you know, since we just, we just were able, we just kind of started to use this, I haven't been able to dive down as much as I'd like, but so, but, you know, this is the goal of the report, which is it starts to kind of like helping you hone in on where you, where you do want to focus your attention on. So, like I say, 44th is definitely one I want to take a closer look at to see what we, if we can find some trends and things.
You started off saying, talking about interest. I'm like, I think this is fascinating for what it's worth, so I'm very excited about the work. I'll keep the rest of my questions for later. Thank you.
Councilmember Page?
The, and just so that you know, you're sitting across from somebody who's probably more excited about stuff like this than you could ever be, because I don't spend 25 of my adult life doing this stuff here. So, but the one thing that I want, and I do have other questions, but I'll wait till later, but the one thing that I noticed that every one of those streets have in common is that they're all cut-throughs, you know? Every one of those streets are cut-throughs, getting from point A to B, you know, through Mount Lake Terrace. So, I don't know if you took that in consideration when you're looking at why those speeds are what they are, but, you know, they're, you know, I don't know how many of those people are Mount Lake Terrace folks, but almost, but every one of them, if you look at them, it's a way to get from Linwood to the highway, Edmonds to the highway, Edmonds to Shoreline, et cetera, et cetera. Every one of those streets are those, you know, that could be why your speeds are what they are also.
Right. You know, they're all arterial streets, so, you know, the arterials are meant to kind of, you know, move traffic, because we want them there instead of trying to go through the neighborhood streets, right? As I talk about like this service that we were utilizing, there are different levels of it. One of the things that you can do with it is look at origin and destination, not specifically from vehicle to vehicle, but patterns of like where traffic, you know, if they're entering from one particular intersection, how, what percentage of those are exiting another, right? So, you can do a kind of an origin and destination. I didn't purchase that part of the, because I just wanted to see, first, kind of get my feet wet with this and see how useful it was, but that's something we can certainly look at kind of down the road if we want to expand to that type of capability.
Anyone else before we move on? Okay.
Okay. Okay. So, collisions, I think is what I was, what I was talking about next. So, in 20, last year, we had 200 collisions in the city total, that's total collisions. This does not, and these are just on Mount Lake Terrace, so it doesn't include collisions on I-5 or the honor amps, even though WashDOT still equates those two, City of Mount Lake Terrace. So, we've kind of pulled those out. Comparatively, if you look at 2023, it's about the same. If you go back to those pandemic years, we're there again, we're increasing. Volumes were low during the pandemic years, and so, fewer people out, fewer, less conflict between, and so, lower volumes, like in 2020 comparatively, we only had, we had 150 compared to 200. But the interesting thing is when you look back, kind of going back like 10 years, if you compare it like 215, you can really see that even though we're kind of creeping back up, we're still kind of lower than those 2015, 2017 years considerably. So, in 2017, we had 250 collisions that year, so quite a bit more than what we're seeing today. So, and you'll, I'll sound like a broken record a bit here, which is, there again, these trends are not unique to Mount Lake Terrace. If you look at, if you were to look at Seattle's collision history, you would see fairly similar. If you were to look at Shoreline, it's fairly similar. So, so, yeah, I just lost my train. All right. So, if we want to take a look at fatal and, the number of fatal and injury collisions, there again, similar profile. In 2024, we had 60 injury collisions compared to the 58 the previous year, so kind of relatively similar, but up from the low of 45 in 2020. But there again, we're still down, if you look at the 10-year, kind of the longer trend, in 2015, we had 80. So, 20 less than we had 10 years ago. So, kind of, we're still trending in that downward direction. I thought this was interesting in the fact that when, so the orange represents the number of collisions. The gray bar, that's the number of injuries. So, you might have one collision, but you might have multiple injuries with that. And I thought it interesting that in 2021, when volumes were lower, but our speeds were slightly higher, we actually have a higher number of injuries. And there again, that might, you could potentially relate that to higher speeds, greater chance of injury. So, just an interesting number to throw out there. When we look at the fatality rate, it's relative, relatively consistent for the last 10 years. If you can see, it's the, it hardly shows up on the graph, but those are those numbers at the bottom. So, one to roughly about a fatality every other year. Thankfully, we're really low. One issue with that is because we have so few, and they're scattered, it's hard to kind of identify trends, right? Because it's just, it's almost a haphazard. So, but I want to take a closer look at that just to make sure we're not missing anything as far as trends, but less fluctuation, fairly consistent. So, bike and pedestrian collisions, looking at pedestrian, collisions involving pedestrians, last year, we saw two. The year before, we saw five. If you were really to look at the kind of average amount over the last four or five years, we're probably, probably about three pedestrian collisions a year, so we're kind of right at that average. This will be another one. When you look at kind of the longer span, so looking back 10 years, we're still quite a bit lower than what the, what our annual rate was, say, in 2015 and 2018, when we were experiencing eight pedestrian collisions a year. So, making headway on that, but still not where I think we'd like to be ultimately. You know, if we're, you know, with the vision zero mindset of trying to reduce injury collisions in particular by the year 2030, there's still some things we could probably do to kind of help get that down lower. When we look at bicycle collisions or collisions involving cyclists, that's another one where it's fairly consistent, about two to three collisions every year. We see slight fluctuations, but only by like one or two. So, the one thing I would say with the bike collisions is that's probably an under-reported number. I think bike collisions tend to be under-reported if it's less severe, either driver or cyclist tend not to report it. So, it's hard to really say what that true number is, but with the data we've got, it's showing relatively consistent. Okay. So, aside from like just the number of collisions, we can look at kind of, you know, types of collisions. And over the last 10 years, if you're to kind of look at them all and kind of categorize them, this graph shows the types of collisions that we see most. And so, you can see that the highest collision type is the angle collision, so vehicles that are turning. Next highest is rear end, and rear ends tend to be higher kind of around collision, or traffic signals, but those two together make up over half of the collision, those two types make up over half the collision types, collisions in the city. So, the other thing to kind of point out on this is that if you look at the total number of biking and pedestrian collisions, we're only about 4%, still more than what we'd like to see, but it's a considerably small part of the total number of collisions we're seeing. So, we can also look at kind of contributing circumstances or almost like environmental factors associated with collisions. And so, that kind of helps give you a better sense of when we're more likely to see collision. So, when you, if you break it up, you might think that more collisions occur when it's wet, when your traction is not great. But in actuality, more, we see more collisions on dry surface, 66% when the surface is dry. More collisions during the daylight hours than the nighttime hours when visibility might not be great. You know, a lot of that is because there's more people driving at those times. So, it's 66, 65% during our daylight hours. If you're traveling on a day of the week, Thursday and Friday are probably the days you want to avoid. Those are kind of your higher days of the week. 5:00 to 6:00 p.m., those, that p.m. commute time when traffic is heaviest represents the greatest percentage of time of day. And then, April, my birthday's in April, so I take umbrage with this, but for whatever reason, April is kind of where we see more collisions occurring. And then, this gets back to kind of what we were talking about before. If you were to look at kind of age, kind of groups, the age group of 20 to 24 is where we see kind of the most number of collisions. So, kind of, kind of back into maybe near the school, kind of the factors that might be in, playing into that. Okay. So, this map shows kind of, if you were to look at all the collisions over the last 10 years and plot them, this is a heat map showing kind of where those collisions are occurring. So, the corridors that jump out the most, I think, are 220th and 214th up at the top. So, you can see, particularly localized, that 214th and 44th intersection is kind of more of a hotspot. And then, 220th, particularly around the 66th and 64th Street intersection, we're seeing a lot of collisions there. And, you know, that's not overly surprising. That's where we have our highest volumes, right? So, there are a lot more conflict, a lot more turning movements, and so, not surprising, but it definitely gives us an ability to kind of like maybe start focusing our attention on, are there some things we can do on those? quarters, um, that can, uh, might help alleviate some of that? And I'll go into that in the next slide just a little bit. What else I was going to point out about this? Two, no, there again, 44th, you can see up by, close to the school, uh, higher rate of collision, you can see that's kind of starting to pop out a little bit. And then 236th Street as well. If you were to look at the 220th Street quarter and the 212th combined, uh, those two quarters make up about, uh, a little over a third of all collisions in the city, just on those two quarters, corridors. Okay. If we look at individual locations, um, this is the, uh, and look at collision rates, these are the, the 10 locations with the highest collision rates. So there again, we saw on the previous slide that, that hotspot at 44th and 212th, um, seeing about nine, a little bit more than nine collisions, uh, a year. That's a, a challenging one, because that's, that's a signalized intersection. It's actually operated by the City of Linwood. So if, if, as we look to try and maybe, um, implement some improvements on that, that's a, City of Linwood would likely need to be the lead on that, but we can certainly coordinate with them and, and try and, um, uh, uh, get together to see if there's some things we can do to kind of address that. The next six locations are, are interesting, because those are all, the, the next highest six locations are all on 220th. There again, pointing out that what we saw on the heat map, um, the intersections along that corridor, um, the 66th and 220th, that's one we've been starting to take a look at. In particular, some ideas for enhancements at that intersection could include, um, uh, striping left turn pockets for the 66th, um, approaches, so that if you're waiting to make a left turn, turn, you're not necessarily feeling like you're holding someone up. Also looking at the, uh, the signal heads on 220th at, at that intersection, you know, right now, we have, um, what are called doghouse, um, uh, signal heads. It's a, it's like a set of five. And so if you're making a left hand turn, you get a left green arrow and, but then you get a solid green with a sign that says yield. I think, well, one thing that might be a little bit more effective could be changing those out to, uh, flashing yellow. I think that's a little bit more clear to drivers that they need to yield to that on oncoming traffic. So, so things, things are like that are things we can pursue to try and help and reduce collisions on that. I might also, uh, note that, um, 66th and 64th, both those intersections are part of our, uh, the adaptive quarter that we just started, that we just activated at the beginning of this year. So, um, the signals between I five and Aurora, um, are all on adaptive control now. What that is, is, um, the signal timing adjusts, um, in real time. So, uh, it takes, uh, information from the, the detectors on the street, and so it can, it sees how much demand is on each leg of, of, of the signalized intersection. And then it feeds, uh, it uses that to kind of adjust the timing, assuming kind of the same, the demand's going to be the same for the next cycle. It adjusts the signal timing to try and, um, reduce the, the collision, or reduce the, um, uh, delay and congestion at that intersection along the whole quarter. So it, it tries to progress traffic in a little bit more uniform manner through the corridor, um, but without, um, jeopardizing, and, and it would be focusing on 220th, but without jeopardizing the side streets to the point where they're going to see a lot of congestion. So it's got twofold, um, reduce, can, reduce congestion and delay at each signal and kind of promote kind of a little bit better progression along the corridor. So that can help, um, in a couple of ways. One, um, if you're progressing and, and your delay is reduced, then kind of your expectation for that signal operation and your frustration is probably going to be reduced. And that's going to likely discourage you or, or not encourage you to make riskier behavior, right? So if you're less frustrated at an intersection, you're less likely to take risky behavior. So hopefully, as, as, um, the system kind of settles in and, um, uh, and it starts to improve the operations on that, so we can see some of those, those collisions go down. Other intersections of note, 58th and, and 220th, that's the always stop. That's a, an intersection we'd like to do a, a more detailed study on and, uh, look at and identify kind of an appropriate, um, uh, alternate traffic control to the multiway always stop. Two things we're looking at in particular would be, uh, potentially a, a roundabout or a traffic circle. So you'll, that's one of the intersections that's in our six-year, uh, tip, trying to get funding for that study and ultimately the improvements at that intersection. So some, um, uh, future improvements planned there. Let's see, uh, 48th and 216th, number seven, um, that's high on the collision. That's not, I didn't, I think overly a big surprise for folks, um, but we just completed our, uh, intersection improvement, um, that was completed end of last year, beginning of this year, uh, where we, uh, installed, uh, curb bulbs on all the approaches to kind of help slow speeds going through there, shorten pedestrian crossing distances, and installed, uh, radar speed backs, uh, displaced feedback signs for drivers to encourage them to, to travel slower, um, improve the, uh, uh, curb ramps and sidewalks on the corners that helped open up the visibility at that intersection. So those improvements, I'm, I'm, I feel pretty confident are going to help us, uh, reduce that, that collision rate at that intersection. The one, one that kind of surprised me a little bit was 48th and 236th. That's another one. It's an always stop, um, that wasn't on my radar screen before. It's not necessarily a high rate. We're, we're looking at 2.7 collisions, uh, annual rate, but still, it's one of the higher ones in the city. So it's one where I think I want to, uh, provide a little bit more attention to. Number nine, 56th and 230th, uh, uh, that's, uh, in the main street, uh, you know, uh, footprint. And so as we move forward with improvements for, as part of the Main Street Phase Two, you know, we're looking at, uh, intersection control for that, and that intersection as well, which could be either an always stop or a traffic circle. So as we kind of complete the analysis for that and have a better idea of, um, uh, what type of funding we have for that project, um, that'll lend itself to, uh, pointing us into, uh, ultimately what type of improvements we want to do at that intersection. And then the last one was 44th and 228th. That was another one that kind of surprised me a little bit. That's a, that's a, a signalized intersection. That's one, wasn't on my radar screen before, so that's one I want to take, I take another look at and see what we might be, what we might be able to do to help, help address the, um, that collision rate. So, um, that's it for the boring part of the day. That, when you, if you, when you go through the, the actual report, I am, I kind of, we kind of close out with, um, just some safety tips, uh, for both drivers, pedestrians and cyclists, things you can do to, you know, how everyone can play a, a better role or their part in helping to make our streets safer. So, um, but with that, I'll just kind of, I'll stop and I'll open it up for questions.
Are there any questions? Comments? Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, thank you. Great report. Love the data. And, uh, I have a few questions. One is, um, how do you collect the data? And when I ask this, it's not just for me or the council, but because we're recorded, uh, the people want to know. I really know how you do it, but would you please explain how you collect the data for speed and traffic?
Well, um, there's a couple of ways for, as I'd, uh, had mentioned before, you know, we have devices that will collect data. So that, those are those, uh, they're small metal boxes, um, we'll chain them to something next to the roadway. We put out tubes across the street as traffic drives over it. Sends a pulse of, of air to that box. It's an amazing box. That box can then take all those pulses and decipher, can sort through them and say, that was a passenger type vehicle traveling 35 miles an hour, or that was a semi truck traveling, you know, 15 miles an hour. So it can, it, it looks at patterns much like you're deciphering like DNA, right? Looking for, uh, um, patterns, um, in that data that, that you can then transfer and relate to, uh, speeds, volumes and types of vehicles. You know, different vehicles have different types of, uh, uh, axle patterns. And so it, it picks up all that. So that's one way. Another way, um, uh, if we want to do, we can do turning movement counts at an intersection.
Slow down. What time?
They're called turning movement counts.
Turning movement counts. I don't know that.
Yeah. So that's when you look at an intersection and you want to find out like how many people are making a left turn? How many are making a right from, you know, how many are going through? How many pedestrians?
How's that observed?
So what we, for that in the past, we've contracted that out with a company. Typically, we've, I think we've used Mio, uh, Myo Vision. What they do is they, they do a, a recording of the intersection for that period.
How?
With a, with a camera, um, and then.
And where's the camera?
Huh? Pardon?
Where's the camera?
It's used typically located on like a pole, it's like a, on a telescoping pole that they attach to something, uh, like a utility pole next to the intersection.
So there, because sometimes I see DOT sitting somewhere and counting.
Yeah. That is, that is one way. We, uh, I don't think we've utilized that approach for several years here.
Okay. I'm sorry to interrupt. Go ahead.
And then, so they take that data back and they have someone go through it and they just count. It's just, it's almost the same thing as when you see DOT sitting at an intersection, except, uh, uh, the difference is rather than sitting at the intersection, hitting a counter board, they're doing that in the comfort of an office, looking at a screen and doing the same boring kind of count. And then, uh, but they don't retain, they don't retain that, um, uh, that footage, that, that, um, so then they, what they provide to us is just the rock, the, just the, the data. So we don't, we don't have, uh, um, that, that video or anything like that. We just, we just get the counts in a sheet.
So is that similar to like if you went into a stadium and they're clicking a?
Yeah.
Counter?
Exactly.
And they're just doing a number?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
And then the last way is, is this, uh, new service that I was talking about that we're using, where we, um, where a company has gone and they've collected that data, collected that data, they've harvested that data, but I should say clean data. And then they aggregate that, right? Um, and then what we do, um, is we, we can just go, we have a, an application, we go in, we don't have that data on our server at all. We go into their, um, uh, database, um, and we just click on a, a street segment. We give the parameters of, hey, I, I'm interested in, uh, April of 2022, um, and I am interested in speed and volume, and it, it will generate a report that'll tell me what the average daily traffic is, um, for that period of time on that, that street segment. It, I can get, um, the, the speed, the average speed or 85th percentile, any percentile speed that I want. So if I want the 90th, I can pull that. And they'll just, it'll just, it just spits that data, that information out to me. So.
And how do they determine average traffic speed?
By, um, with, with a smart, with like, uh, smart devices, um, there's a, uh, uh, locating portion of that, right? And so I can see when you, when a particular device, you know, went through one particular, one intersection and when it went through another intersection, and then it, knowing that distance, um, and that time, it can calculate, that's how it calculates speed.
Is that something they place there temporarily or permanently?
No, that's, 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 um, that's, uh, data that's associated with, uh, phones and smart cards and data placements. I'm not an expert on that, this portion of it, so I can't dive down that too much into it, but.
So.
For that one.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's the same data placer, uh, the same data that we used for the Economic Development Strategic Plan to see where people were going to shop. It's basically, uh, everybody's phone, you, uh, is tracked and they can tell, you know, where you go and when you go and everything else.
Oh.
But the data that they, I just, so I want to make sure that people aren't, aren't.
I love it.
So what? Yeah, it's not individual data. So it, that's why it's, it's, um, uh, aggregated data. And, and before they get it, it's scrubbed of all kind of like personal, so there's, there's no way to take that data and then try and track one, one, like an individual person.
Okay. So it's not like I have a smart TV and it's listening to me in my living room?
I'm not sure what kind of TV you have, but.
That's all the smart TVs now.
Yeah. Yeah. Exactly. It's not.
So I check in.
Yeah.
Okay. I have more questions, if I may?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Thank you. On the, in, on 44th Avenue and where the school is, Hawk Way, do you have any specific data on either collisions and/or pedestrians on that particular place?
Well, so we do have, uh, Wash Dot data, collision data, that will tell us that we can, we can query a specific location. So I can pull up the collision history for a specific intersection, um, uh, over the last, um, I, I think we've got right now, the last 10 years. And with that, I can see the types of collisions, you know, there again, just kind of what we've talked about. I can see when it happened, uh, your time of day, what type of collision, was it a rear end? Was it, so I can get all that, that type of data on, on a particular location. So, yeah.
The reason I'm asking is we've had some questions here tonight regarding the school and school safety. So that's why I'm asking that, because usually when I go by and drive by, it's after everybody's in school and it's very calm there. Another thing is, um, you had mentioned that, uh, you had some, uh, collisions with drivers between 20 and 24?
So.
Age?
Yeah.
And, uh, but I'd like to mention that high schoolers are between 17 and 19 years. So I don't want to, uh, give them a.
A bad rap.
Yeah, a bad rep. And I noticed too, um, that, and that area, that we do have a lot of cars driving by with little yellow tags that say, be patient, new driver, or lap. Now, so I'm expecting a high school student, but they're all adults. So I don't know what's going on there. So that's kind of confusing to me. But, uh, so anyway, I just wanted to bring that up as far as the, uh, age for drivers, and they aren't in that.
That's a good point.
Area.
Yeah.
So I would not peg high school students with that area. Another thing is, um, we had mentioned cut-throughs, a cut-through this. Usually cut-throughs are thoroughfares. And thoroughfares are not necessarily our, arterials. For example, 56th Avenue is an arterial, but what's the speed limit? It's what?
It's 30.
30, yeah. Then we have 58th. What's the speed limit?
25.
25. But most people don't know it. So I'm going to be talking to the city manager about that. Maybe we need more signs. I live on that street. So, but then you have the cross streets and how to get through and everything. So, um, those cut-throughs, everybody's going to use them. So what are we going to do? They're not slowing down. And the thing is, you know, you can't put up.
Right.
Flashing lights everywhere and things. And I think you're doing a great job, by the way, with those, um, the traffic signaling things that tell you you're going too fast.
The radar speed.
Yeah, there, those. That's really helping a lot.
Yeah.
So I think that's a great thing. And it's interesting on the data, the last. Come on, computer, wake up. Excuse me. 44th and 228th. Was a lot better than usual. Four years ago, it was like number one and had several accidents there. Also, uh, down my road, on, uh, 58th and 230th, um, when I moved into Mount Lake Terrace in, uh, 1985, every four years, there'd be a fatality at, it was a two-way stop. And finally, we made it a four-way stop, and then we just now have people get out, have arguments and they get into fights. So, uh, and we had a council member, he would attest to this, but, um, because he'd have to go out and wonder what's going on. But anyway, uh, uh, just wanted to throw out a few things there for you. So I appreciate that, you know, I'm not trying to be really critical or anything. I just want to make sure everybody knows, uh, some of the data here, and thank you very much, your report.
Thanks. I appreciate the insight that you provided too.
Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. And actually, I'd like to build upon that. My history with, uh, what is that? 58th and, um, can I get my numbers mixed up here?[1767.66] Right up the street, you just said it.
230th.
Thank you. I live right on that street. I just blanked on it. It's a four-way stop now. If you go back in the record of this council, we've had conversations about that. And we pointed out that it became a four-way stop because apparently there was money in the budget at some point and they did that, not because the numbers supported it. I bring that up to say that as much as I think that 48th and 216th, and correct me if I got that wrong, that's where we just did this brand-new, beautiful redesign. But we did not make that a four-way council, or four-way stop. This council wanted us to. I think I am speaking on behalf of myself, but I'm pretty sure there was enough of us who thought that should be four-way. And we were told the numbers didn't hold up. And I'm looking at this and I'm saying, but here it is on your list. Isn't that interesting? Which is again, I guess is my way of saying, would really like to see this data be used to make a better case, to make that a four-way stop. And it wasn't your call, and I don't think it's anybody's call. It was engineering's call as a concept. The numbers didn't support it. But history does. Because to our point, these numbers would be really unbelievable if you could somehow count, miss, like missed it by that much. Because everybody sitting here has got at least one, man, that was almost me, missed it by this much, right? And so that's where I'm like, these numbers are horrible, but they could be even worse. And sometimes the numbers and the science don't match what we know is true. Which is again, I'm going to go back to, we've tried to get 48th and 216th into a four-way stop and just want to say, hey, this seems like a path towards that. Even if at the end, we just need the money to do it.
Yeah, just one thing I would, I would just want to raise on that is when we're looking at like appropriate form of traffic control, there's, there's a number of factors that play into it. So part of, one of the things definitely is the number of collisions. What can we consider? But we also want to make sure that what we're putting, something that we do out there doesn't also maybe potentially exacerbate it. And one of the challenges, I think, with 48th and 216th is the unevenness of volume on that. So it's, sometimes you can run into a little bit of an issue if you, if you, if you're stopping a street that has high volume and people are stopping and there's not typically a cross traffic that they feel like that kind of helps confirm or, or support kind of why they're stopping. You can, then you can start to see higher violation rates. And when people are expecting stop signs to work, having kind of that expectation not met can be challenging. So I just want, I'm not saying, you know, stop sign is not the right spot. And I'm just saying, there's multiple things that we want to look at. And there again, that's something that we can get a little bit better with this type of a report is we look at speeds, we look at volumes, we look at collisions. So it's kind of like factoring all those types of things into, into our decision-making and trying to make a better decision. So you're, you're absolutely right. It's kind of like this can, can help us make maybe a more well-informed decision.
I have a question. Councilmember?
Yeah, I have a question, but then, like I said, an observation. Again, I just want to say, I commend you for the work that you did on this report. I know how much work went into this report. You know, I spent many, 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 many years doing and looking at and evaluating reports like this. And, and so I applaud you and your staff, you know, for putting this together and then being able to talk about it. Okay? The, the question I have is, you know, what do you attribute the differences, the decrease of the, what happened 10 years ago versus what's happening now? And what you, what do you think is going to, it's going to look like five years from now? Because I moved here in 2020, live on the top of 228th. I was furloughed because I worked for the school district. I sat in my window and I watched near misses almost every day on, was it Kmart Hill? Every day, every day. And, and I know that was a different time from five years before that. And now, you know, life has changed in the city quite a bit, you know, because of all the construction. So, you know, then, then, and then tomorrow, what are you, what are you attributing to all that?
Well, you know, traffic engineering, traffic control is constantly evolving. We're always coming up with like new techniques and tools and techniques that we can use in our belt. I mean, if you think about how frequently you might have seen radars, feedback, radars display feedback signs or tangential rapid flashing beacons, say 10 years ago, not nearly what you would anticipate, or what you would see today. Just an analysis, kind of how we look at things, I think the mentality over the years has kind of shifted as well. I mean, if you really start going back far enough, we were, things were more about moving automobiles and vehicles. And I think as we've progressed, there's a lot more focus as well on how do we safely, how do we make the streets work better for pedestrians and cyclists? And so the way we mark and the types of treatments we do, I think, has changed over the years. And so I think that plays a big part into it. And I think that'll continue to change and we'll continue to develop more techniques that will help us more effectively manage and enhance the safety of our streets. So I see it as, I think the Vision Zero is a great goal. I think it really helps us kind of strive for that good goal. You know, trying to take all of human error out of, of, you know, traffic operations is going to be challenging. So, but I definitely think there's great strides we can still make.
And my observation is this, and I'm, I'm a person who over the years, you know, when I look at the fatalities that we've had, which are very few, and that's the top, the pyramid, that's the top of the pyramid. I think you know what I'm talking about with the pyramid. But the things that I pay attention to that I think warrants looking at, you know, are your near misses? Because in, in, in safety, they always say, with injuries and collisions, the difference between a serious injury, an injury and a serious injury, collision and a serious injury. And he, Councilmember Wood, it kind of related to a little bit is just a few seconds or a few inches. And then there's the difference. And so when I look at some of the things, and I wonder, you know, how do you incorporate this into your plans? I look at your near misses, 26% of this stuff are pedestrians who didn't get disabled, didn't get killed. Cyclists didn't get injured, didn't get killed. Left turns, those should be, those should be collisions that people aren't walking away from. Because that's a head-on collision, you know, for the most part, intersection collision. But they did, because it doesn't fall in that number, that serious number, as well as your head-ons, you know, that didn't result in fatalities. So those are near misses. And when we look at the, you know, the cost to society, you know, what, 7 million total society cost? But, you know, only like, I'm not going to say only, I shouldn't say that, but 1.9. But four, four of that seven are your near misses. And I couldn't help think while I'm looking at this, is, you know, responsible government is to ensure desired level of service to the brand, Mount Lake Terrace. And so I ask myself, based upon these numbers, what I feel like that Mount Lake Terrace is a safe place to travel through? Because these places that are highlighted are cut-throughs. You know, so these are not necessarily, they could be Mount Lake Terrace residents, you know, but they might be folks cutting through Mount Lake Terrace because it's convenient. And they're having all of these collisions, you know, that amounts to over $4 million. And so I just wonder, how do we leverage this information to improve our brand? Because, you know, I think that, again, if we were analyzing, someone took this information and, and put in the potential numbers of almost $60 million, you know, if these are all fatalities, for instance, you know, we'd make the news. And so, so that, that was an observation that really jumped out at me. Because a lot of times we say, well, this happened, it's okay. This happened, it's okay. Yeah, those are collision, but it wasn't bad. But it was bad, because if you look at the pyramid, you know, and the numbers don't lie. You, you hit X amount of numbers, you're going to have the fatality. You're going to have the serious injury or the serious collision. So, you know, we really got to focus on, I think, you know, those, what those type of near misses are and, and what's causing those. Is it our infrastructure, you know? Is it signage? Is it lack of lights or too many lights? Or is it something other? And then what's, what's the education part? And I know we talk about 20 to 24-year-olds, that makes up, you know, you know, the program, you know, live to, alive at 25. Well, you know, and what that is, is if a student or if an individual, a youth can get to 25 without having a serious crash, exponentially, they have a chance of, of not getting killed in a crash. And I know Washington State has that program. But, so maybe part of that education process, maybe it's with the high schools, but probably maybe we collaborate our information that we have here in Mount Lake Terrace with Edmonds Community College, you know, where we're having, you know, some sort of information set where, I don't know, I don't know if they're going to come to a class because a 19, a 20, a 20 to 24-year-old don't think anything's going to happen to them. But, you know, marquee, something that shows them this information that is real, that will hopefully protect them and at the same time protect our brand. Okay?
Yeah. I'll just, just kind of respond a little bit on that, because I think you bring up some really good points. You know, I totally agree with you, kind of like the near misses, you know, the hard, kind of also speak volumes, right? The challenge I think we have with near misses is how do you quantify that? How do you, you know, right, because, because there's no way to record that, there's no, there's no data source. But one thing I would say is, and I think I touched on this maybe slightly in the report, which is, you know, we can take a look at where collisions are occurring, right? And we can start trying to look at not just the trend of the location-specific, but what are some of the characteristics that those, those various locations maybe share? You know, are there, are there certain types of characteristics that, that might lend itself to a higher propensity for, for near misses or collisions? And then if we can identify some of those, then we can start being more proactive and looking at what intersections, other intersections of the city have those, but maybe just don't have, had the collisions that, that pop up, right? And trying to implement those solutions in advance so that we can reduce that, that propensity for, for collision. So that's one way we might be able to try and get at those types of near misses. That being said, there's a lot of work that's involved in that. So the hard part is, you know, we don't have a, we don't have a team of like 20 people. We have a team of kind of like one. So, but that's one, something I'd really like to do is try and kind of try and identify some of those characteristics that we could be more proactive rather than reactive when it comes to collision.
You know, one thing, one way in which you can do it is because every one of those have a cost associated with it. So instead of using the number, you use the cost. You know, how much did it cost for a cyclist to get hit? How much did it cost for a rear end? I mean, rear end is your second most expensive injury when you have all these others out of the way. Because it's usually a result of a neck, back or shoulder injury. So if you use cost instead of just number, that's what insurance companies do. That's how they set your rate, not on number, but they, they use, how much is it, how much does each one cost? And then, then you know, you know, where you need to put your focus at, what type of, and then where it's happening.
So the, one last thing I'll touch on this, I, well, I won't say last, because if you have more questions, I'll keep answering. You know, when you, when you talk about like cut-through corridors, you know, I, I really cut my teeth on traffic engineering with neighborhoods, you know, working Seattle's neighborhood traffic calming program, working closely with the neighborhoods. One of the things I kind of realized is while, while volume plays a portion of it, speed is a bigger portion of that, of the, of the safety equation. So when we tried to, when, when, when I was working, and when we were trying to like discourage folks from cutting through neighborhoods and we just put up like physical blocks, right? Hey, you're not, partial closure, not going to be, people just find their way around that, right? They don't want, necessarily want to change their path too much. And so now we've just pushed a problem from one street to the next. What I realized, what's a more effective technique is how can we encourage or get people to slow down? Because if they're slowing down, one, they're able to make, everyone's be able to make better decisions. So you, you, you give people a chance to make better decisions, so you can reduce the collision rate there. If there are collisions, they're less severe. And two, a lot of times people are cutting through because they think that's a faster route. So if you make it so it's not a faster route, it may discourage them more than just trying to put a blockade, you know, kind of like prevent, physically prevent people from coming in. Because that also impacts residents trying to get to where they want to go. You know, we don't, we're not trying to stop residents from getting, to getting their house. We're just, we want people to like travel appropriately and at a safe speed. That's really one of the biggest goals. So anyways, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you. Appreciated the presentation. I find it fascinating and could probably ask a million questions, but I do have a couple that I'd like, like to ask. So, well, I guess maybe more of a comment or maybe, is it, the heat map was super helpful for me as somebody who like, when I can visualize something, like I, we've seen some of this data before in kind of various ways, right? But to see particularly the impact of, you know, you know, the number of collisions and the intensity, I think is the word you use, of collisions on 220th and at, you know, 212th and 48th, or 44th, that like, that told a very powerful story for me that was really helpful. And I think one of the things I would personally be interested in is seeing something similar around collisions that just, that involve a bicycle or a pedestrian. I think, again, when you talk about kind of some of the, the patterns and trying to feel like, there's not a lot of them, right? But I think, like, seeing if there is some sort of story there as well that's told in a visual format, I think would be really helpful particularly as we look at investments and infrastructure like sidewalks and other safety measures.
In the, in the full, in the report, I do have a map that shows the location of where pedestrian collisions occurred and where bicycle collisions occurred. So you can see that. And what you'll see is they're pretty spread out. I mean, when you look at the, the number of locations where we have multiple, we've had multiple pedestrian collisions over the last 10 years is really few. They're, they're kind of scattered a little bit more. So you can see that, you can see that as well as bicycle collisions. But that's where it gets back into maybe looking at those, those locations individually, but trying to get a sense of are there common characteristics about those locations that we can kind of glean some information for, from. So.
Do you ever, like, is there value in going back further than that? I guess I'm just curious, given again that, you know, you don't have a ton of them.
I mean, there could be. I think as you start going farther back, some of the, how we, you know, like our, you know, pedestrian push buttons, countdown push button, you know, a lot of things change. And so the, your, your intersections kind of operate a little bit different the farther you go back. But if we're trying to look at trends, I mean, we could go back farther and find intersections and then see over time, how, how much has that changed? Because if it hasn't changed a lot, then it might be, that can help us point to some improvements.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. We haven't, I was going to say, you talked about Vision Zero, which I think is great. We haven't formally adopted a Vision Zero plan, correct?
I don't believe we have formally adopted that.
Okay, all right. I would be interested in, yeah, I guess, hearing more about that at some point. Because I think it sounds like we're already integrating, you know, aspects of that into your work.
It's a good, it's a good goal.
That's, I was going to say, I know a lot of communities have formally adopted that. So, I mean, I think a, a goal of zero is a very good plan when it comes, comes to safety. So. I guess I'm curious, so you mentioned the intersection at 212th and 44th is controlled by Linwood?
So the, the city limits split that intersection. So the north half is, if I recall it, is City of Linwood, south half is ours. The signal that's there is operated by the, the City of Linwood. We don't, we don't control that, that signal in itself. So, but we have a pretty good working relationship with Linwood. I mean, we, they maintain a lot of our signals for us. When we're doing the, the adaptive signal operations on 20, that's run through the City of Linwood's Traffic Operations Center. So, so we've got a really good relationship. So it wouldn't be, it's not, it would not be overly challenging to kind of reach out to them and say, hey, you know, what are you seeing here? The one thing they may say is like, hey, that's great, but we've got several intersections that have a much higher rate than this. So, but happy to work with them. We know them well, so.
Okay, all right. No, I appreciate, that's helpful information. Because, yeah, I think it's three of the four corner. I mean, so like we, three-fourths of, of the intersection is, is Mount Lake Terrace. And obviously lots of our folks go through there. So, and, yeah.
Yeah, not, not one that we just want to kind of forget about, that's for sure.
100%. So, okay, thank you for helping me understand that piece better. Question about the 2, the 56th and 230th that you have listed there. I think you were talking about some not signal, some alternative options. But I guess, so I want to ask that question, because I guess I'm curious particularly about that one. Because to the east on 230th, to the east of 56th is a local street. So the idea of putting a signal there is, I think, interesting and would definitely change traffic patterns perhaps. And I think anecdotally, what I've seen as somebody who spends a lot of time in that section, you know, the kid who goes to school there and living in that area is, and we've talked about this, I think, before in the past, is 52nd connects to an arterial down in Shoreline, which connects to like, to Ballenger Way. And so I think a lot of folks take that arterial through Shoreline, take 52nd, and they go all the way up to 230th. And then they use 230th to cut through and take the overpass that goes through on 228th. And so I think there's a lot of, I think there's a lot more traffic there than there's historically been. Particularly, I think you talked about like this idea of slowing people down as more and more people have technology in their cars that are integrating maps.
Right.
Like people who would have taken the arterials, because that's how they know how to get through the community, are like, I could save one minute by cutting through this neighborhood. And that's what they do. And so I guess I'm. And so I guess I'm, I guess I think that's just important to name that like as we're looking at those sorts of things. I guess maybe what I didn't see, we've, so we've, I think, three areas that we've heard from that I didn't see represented in the data that we talked about today in terms of kind of multiple concerns expressed from the community. I think one is that 52nd and 236th intersection. But again, I think a lot of that is that 52nd coming up from Ballenger Way, Lakeview Drive, and then 48th. And I guess I'm curious to hear kind of what the future plans are about looking at some of those streets that we didn't talk about today, but that we've heard a lot of feedback that there's concern from the community around.
Right. You know, some of the, one of the things I want to do to kind of help even further, you know, kind of help us zone in on locations. You know, one is, you know, we talked about collisions as one. With the, the surface we have, I'd like to create a map, a complete map of the city that shows speed on the street and versus the, the difference between the speed on the street and the posted speed. As a matter of fact, when I, when we were talking with the vendor about that, I had mentioned that was something I'd really want to do. And after we decided to purchase, he said, oh, by the way, I just want you to know, I brought that up with our team and they're gonna do that, they're gonna make that an option of how you can, so. So something like that where we can really see where, you know, speeds are the, and then same thing. Making a, I want to put together a, a flow map for the city which shows every arterial street and what the volume is on that. So that might kind of help kind of create that, a better picture of, of where we're seeing volumes. And if we update that annually, then we can see how volumes are changing. So as, as projects happen in the city or development occurs, we can start to see if that's changing traffic patterns. But at any time, I mean, if there's a, a specific intersection, I mean, we don't have to solely rely on the traffic report. You know, if people have a concern and they contact us, that's when we can kind of dive down specifically and, and, and take a look to see, are there some things we can do to kind of help improve traffic operations and safety at a, at a location, so.
That's awesome. And I know, I was gonna say, you're relatively newer still to the city.
I still feel like a newbie.
Do we have some records of kind of past concerns that have been brought by the city or the community? Because I will say again, I think those, the three areas I mentioned are at least the three that come to mind for me that we have heard from, I think, multiple folks over the years that I've been on the council.
Again, I'm gonna lean over my shoulder a little bit and look at Rich.
Hi, Rich.
I, I'm not aware of like, you know, when I worked in Seattle, we had a locate, it was called the location file. So every intersection, if you got a complaint afterwards, it would be filed into the, I don't know, I'm not aware that we have anything like that in, not like terrace, but.
Rich, I don't know, do you, can you think of any, any way of looking at like past complaints at specific locations?
We would do a search on the network drive to see if we can find a location.
Hurry, Rich.
Sorry, Rich. I hear you thought I was gonna.
Hi, Rich Meredith, City Engineer. We would do a search on the network drive just to see what we could find that way. But some of the plans that we have is to try to track more of the customer requests that we get. We need to have a better storage mechanism for that. So it's going to be spotty with what we had before, but moving forward as we continue to do more data-driven solutions, we want to be able to, be able to gather up all those complaints because people in our city are the ones that are out there 24/7.
Right.
You know, we go out there, we see something on one day or a couple of days, but I tend to give a lot more weight to the people that see it all the time because that's really the people that got to live there with it anyway, so.
No, I appreciate that perspective. And I guess hearing that, is there a best way, if folks have reached out before and maybe feel discouraged if they haven't necessarily found resolution to their concerns? Is there a good, what's the best way for them currently to reach out and maybe share new concerns or reiterate past concerns?
I think they can contact, if they can go to.
Yeah, we gotta give it.
Tag team. On our website, you can, I, I believe, I believe we have the ability to, Carolyn, now you've got a, I want to say, we don't have quite have the quick click it, fix it, but, yeah.
Yeah, not yet. Eventually what I want to have is a Mount Lake Terrace app for your, for your smartphone. It's tracking you everywhere you go to where you can report an issue, whether it's a street light out or a potlou or one of these issues with traffic, those types of things. People report them, but the incidence of reports go down if you have to wait until you get home to do it. So if you're standing out there on the street and you see a problem, take a picture of it, click it, send it to us, and then you get a tracking, a tracking email, lets you know when it's been assigned to somebody in the Public Works Crew, what crew it is, and it'll let you know when it's been addressed. And we do have it on our website, but I, I want that app piece.
And people can also direct, email me directly. But if you're not sure, if you don't know who I am, it might be harder to find me. That's why initially I was trying to say, you know, if you go to the site, traffic, traffic operations, you can, there's a, I think a spot there you can leave them concerned.
Awesome, thank you all, appreciate Rich, you joining the conversation and appreciate the answers to things. And I guess I would just put in a plug, we, I think many of us were at PSRC, the Puget Sound Regional Council's annual session, I don't, can't remember what it's called. But any, general assembly, thank you, I knew it had a fancy term. But today we approved a regional safety plan, action plan around traffic and safety. So I'm really excited for us all to dig into that. I think it looked fascinating and there was a lot of time and energy and work that put in to hopefully giving us great solutions to partner with the great data that you have collected to find solutions for our community. And I think one of the things that I took away was to do, to pick something, right? And I would love to see us do that, right? Like what is something that we can move forward on relatively quickly now that we have this data? You know, it sounds like you're already thinking of lots of things. And so I guess maybe that's kind of my final question is just what can we expect? I know there's, it's ongoing work and it like, but like in terms of like kind of the near term, what can we expect as far as kind of next steps or follow-on to this data report?
Well, like I said, you know, one thing in particular, one, the first thing that jumps out to mind is when I was looking at that 66th and 220th and looking at the left collisions and the thought of wanting to put, change out the signal heads up there because I think that will have a really positive effect and that's something. So then it's really just matching kind of the budget, the resources to do that, so. But yeah, I think as I, as I look, as I start calling through this, it's just taking a look at some of those intersections, 48th and, 44th and 228th, and 48th and 236, excuse me. Because those hadn't been on my radar screen at all. So those are some things, things I want to do is just kind of start diving in a little bit more specifically on locations, but.
Thank you, thank you all, appreciate it.
House Member Salmore?
I think this would be such a hot topic and go so long. And I wasn't gonna say anything, but I'll, I'll do it real quick and, and thank you for being here. And you've identified most of the areas that we talked about before. The one I was gonna bring up is 212th and 48th. That one is half Linwood. One year we repaired our side of the road and we had to wait for Linwood to, a couple of years later to repair. But this is not our first rodeo doing road repairs and updating a lot of it. In 2009, we had a complete plan to update 48th and two, two-way it with the turn lane all the way down. And then Hawkway and 228th on 44th are fairly new single, signals that have slowed down traffic significantly in that area. And I know just managing expectation, we, there was two council members on the, on the board in about 2007 and we requested a stop sign. It took about five years to get that stop sign. Nothing is ever easy with transportation and roads. There's a lot of studies that have to go on. There's a lot of responsibilities in the job description itself. And that's why it's so important to have that priority list and you just kind of go down it and, and look at it. So our job is really to kind of see what you have planned and I liked what you had planned. I like the, the notes in the back because the one thing we always forget, we, we, we all think it's about roads, right? It is, but it's also about the human perspective. It's the person behind the wheel driving and what you do and if, how you're preoccupied. And over the years, we had cell phones introduced that have caused a lot more traffic issues than ever before. We are, we're distracted a lot more, but I, I think you have a good plan here. But it, it's really managing the expectation. 230th was done in 2010 because it was direct link into Edmonds, up Kmart Hill and into Mount Lake Terrace. So it connected both halves of our citizens because one half is on one side of the freeway and the other half's on the other side of the freeway. And that was a big deal. We had to get a lot of money for that curb sidewalk scutter. You know, you guys remember, we had that big grand opening for it, but that took a lot of time and effort. It's just, I like when citizens report like trees in the way and different things like that. But we also have to understand if you're requesting a stop sign or roundabout, it's gonna take a while. And it is just not something you can click your fingers at. And, you know, we've had transportation and road presentations like this before and tracking it. I don't know, I mean, I can tell you, we had an update in our neighborhood, but to me, I'd rather have you spend time on what you're doing now. You can look at our past transportation plans and road plans you probably already did when you came in. But it's, there's a lot more to it than people think. And so when people have a complaint about something, it's just not fixed like that. And I think that's where, as council members, we have to manage our citizens' expectations sometimes because it's all about the almighty dollar most of the time, so, thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, you have your hat there.
I just wanted to make sure. Done, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, great report, really appreciate it. You know, Erin mentioned it's very timely because we just officially adopted the, Puget Sound Regional Council adopted the regional safety action plan. You've been hearing me talk about it for years, we've been developing it. But it's, it's an exciting conclusion and it's really great to be able to now localize what we've been talking about on a regional and county-wide. You know, county has a, a safety plan as well. So it's, it's very helpful to be able to put our fingers on the intersections and specific streets. But I did want to make sure to pass this along to you. They've done it, if you haven't seen it, they've done a tremendous job collecting the data, really identifying, you know, the problems. So, you know, part of it is, is the type of road, part of it is the speed, part of it is distraction. And they've, just a lot of data available to help guide our decisions. And then based on that, they developed a lot of great recommendations for how to address each one of those different types of challenges. You mentioned several of them, but there's some other innovative ideas that, that we've come up with here in the action plan. And then finally, perhaps most importantly is there is funding available through the Puget Sound Regional Council. Yeah, you see them reach out for that. Yeah, there was a $5 million grant from, from the feds that, that we've been able to play with. A lot of those grants have been already distributed. I believe there's still a little bit more to be able to help us address some of these challenges and pay for the, you know, the ways, a plan, A, a plan. So if we want to develop a zero plan, a zero goal plan, there's funding for the planning and then there's the, the funding for, to help with addressing the fixes, so.
Awesome, thanks.
No, thank you, great job, appreciate it.
Thanks.
So one thing I did get out of the Puget Sound, PSRC's meeting today is that I knew that we had smartphones. I didn't know we had smart cars.
No.
And so if you're driving a smart car, smart car, they already know that, where you're going. Do you have a smart car?
Yeah, 37 computer chips.
Oh my gosh, so.
Most cars are.
So my car is? Okay, so everybody knows where I'm gonna be. But anyways, okay, and then I, that smart TV part, I know that it talks to me sometimes. I didn't know I had a smart TV, but anyways. Apparently we're just, Big Brother is watching us no matter what we do. All right, anyone else before we move on to the next people who have been waiting patiently out there? Okay, I think we're done with this, thank you so much. You want to take a break? Can we take a five-minute break?
Eight thirty, eight thirty-two?
Okay, be back. Okay, we're back in session. And next on our agenda is the review on, the review of the on-call agreement with, with the parametrics for water, water tower coating. And you're already sitting there with our Public Works Director, Gary Schmeck.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, Mayor Protem and Council. Happy Public Works Week, by the way. Hope you're enjoying your week. Here to ask your consideration of two requests. First is increasing the limit of the existing on-call engineering support contract with parametrics from 100,000 to 200,000. And the second is get your approval to move forward with a new work assignment under that contract for about $83,000 for parametrics to provide project management and engineering support to recote the exterior of our 2.5 million gallon water tank to ensure the safe, continued safe delivery of water to our ratepayers and community. Wanted to just briefly explain the need for the recoding and then the need for the consultant support. You know, we, it's in the staff report, but I just want to dig it just a little bit deeper. So a 2020, 2024 study that was done before I got here found that the exterior of our main tank, the 2.5 million gallon tank, you could probably see this, that the paint layers were what's called in the business delaminating, which basically means the paint's chipping and peeling to significant amount. And there's also, was found to be a bunch of organic growth moss on the tank. Now, the good news though is that there's a base layer that is protecting the corrosion, corrosion. This is still a corrosion barrier that's, you know, preventing the further degradation of the metal. But the recommendation was to pressure blast and recote, not, not simply wash and repaint, but pressure blast and recote as soon as possible to ensure the safe delivery of water. Because again, the issue on the outside is you do not want the metal to corrode. So that's the reason behind the proposed capital project. There is other work that was recommended in that study, seismic retrofit. And that's gonna, we're gonna be coming to you later on this, but this is something we have in the budget for now to start with the painting, the recoding. In terms of the on-call contract, just wanted to remind you, there's really two reasons that we ask for and use these on-call contracts. Really, the first is need for peak workflow when our staff just doesn't have the time, but they have the experience. And the second is when we don't have the particular experience in-house. In this case, it's peak workload. We are, you know, fully, fully loaded with our engineering and project management, so we need the support. And that's why we, it's kind of a staff augmentation. So we are requesting the increase in the contract amount and then to 200,000. And this particular work assignment will be, looks at 83, and that will still leave us with about 66,000 if we have other work that we feel parametrics can do for us, which I, I have a whole bunch of support that I think that we need from them that we don't have the in-house expertise for. But, so I think we'll be using that, coming back to you and using that 66,000. But that's a request and here for any questions.
Are there any questions? House Member Salmore?
So in about 2008, I believe, we took the lead paint off and that was a big deal, having to contain all the lead chip paint. So all the lead paint is gone, no, it's not.
Unfortunately, on, on the other two tanks, I believe that is true. But there is, will need to be lead abatement for this. So that is when we come back, you know, we're anticipating the cost to be about $500,000 for the actual work. But that is going to depend on how much the lead abatement's gonna cost. So we are, we are a little nervous about that, but that's, but we knew this from the report. But it's, you know, again, that, that, your memory is correct on the other tanks. That is, that is been taken care of on the. on the smaller two tanks.
And, and when they recoat it, it has to be the same color?
Oh, that is a great question. I don't think so. I think that's something we can, when we get back to that, we can talk, come talk to you about that. The key is the type, right, of paint that you use to make sure that, right, you've got your base layer and your other layers to make sure that you're, that's anti-corrosive. So I don't think the color really matters, but that's something we'll, when we come back to actually for the project, we'll, we'll.
It's just that color, just a little, if I can remember, late 80s, early 90s, all our hydrants were painted that weird blue. And that's kind of the, and so that's kind of a, I like actually retro, but we've all been wondering if that could ever change colors. I know that's a side note, but I was just curious.
But we'll come, yeah, we'll, we'll definitely be back to, to talk about that when we actually have the contract for the painting. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah, I, I think lead paint, it's almost impossible to get everything, all of it off. In houses at least, but I don't know about tanks.
Yeah, there's a, there's, there are experts in the field that just, that do it very, very safely.
They know what they're doing.
They know what they're doing, but there, you know, there is a cost to it.
So are there any other questions then? Go ahead, Councilmember Salmore.
The top portion of the tank, the large tank, how's that doing?
The dome, the dome is fine. Yeah, that was actually done in the 2024 study, that there's no problems with the dome. And also, the interior is, is acceptable. We, we probably will want to do that soon, so we may do that when we do the seismic retrofit, but we don't have to do it right now. So we're safe with that.
Okay. Anyone else? So we're fine with this?
And I think we requested for consent.
Yes. So I, Councilmember Woodard, did you have a question?
Question, comment. I hope this is not inappropriate. You are on the outside of your probationary period, correct?
Correct.
Congratulations. I don't know if we said that publicly. So congratulations. We're very happy.
Appreciate it. I am very happy.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Carolyn.
All right. So next is we're fine with, with this being on the consent calendar for next time, and then we can just go on to the next. All right.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Councilmember Ryan, did you have a question?
No, I was just waving.
Oh, you're waving him. Thank you. All right. So next is the review of the bid award for Ballenger Viewing Platform and Trails with our Recreation and Parks Director, Jeff Betts. And?
We're just getting set up here real quick, but just wanted to say good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Councilmembers. And actually, due to the presentation here is going to be Parks Project Manager, Don El Dyo. And I'm here for support at this point.
No, it isn't.
I'm here tonight to present the bid award for the Ballenger Viewing Platform and Trails project. For our agenda this evening, we will review our council goals, go over where the project stems from, talk about our design approach, look at the various experiences offered as a part of the design, review our call for bids and timeline, discuss finances and budget related to the project moving forward, and answer any questions you might have. Here are the council goals. So we're here to talk about the Ballenger Viewing Platform and Trails project, which will be the next project from the Ballenger Park Master Plan. The Ballenger Park Master Plan is a vision document that was shaped with community input and adopted in 2015. The Master Plan reimagines the 55-acre site, transitioning from what was formerly, formerly a manicured golf course and is now shaping into an accessible park space that supports recreation, environmental restoration, and community gathering. The plan itself includes several phased projects, some for passive activities, some for recreation, and others that focus on ecological aspects of the park. Over the past five years, we've made major strides at transforming Ballenger Park. In 2021, the beach and waterfront were renovated, including a new floating dock and fishing pier. In the following years, we completed the East Side Trail and Hazel Miller Universally Accessible Playground, providing over 6,000 square feet of play space and improving connectivity between the Mickey Corso Community Clubhouse and the boat launch. And more recently, we partnered with the Army Corps of Engineers to complete the Hall Creek Restoration Project. This involved realigning the creek, installing a boardwalk, and a vehicle bridge, and planting thousands of native species and shrubs, of shrubs and trees. The work completed with the Hall Creek project really laid the foundation for this next phase. And tonight, we're focusing on the West Side Park with installation of new trails, a park portal entry, and wildlife viewing platform. The Viewing Platform and Trails project builds on the work that was completed with the Hall Creek Restoration Project and installing additional trail connections and boardwalks that wrap around the ponds and vegetation on the west side of the park. These trails will provide pedestrian access from the Interurban Trail to the new boardwalk and vehicle bridge. The project falls within the shoreline planning area, which is regulated by the city, the Army Corps of Engineers, the Washington State Department of Ecology, as well as the Department of Fish and Wildlife. Due to the location, there was extensive permitting work for work within the shoreline area and including the structure that extends over the water. Starting with the Master Plan's concept for the west side, the design team worked with all agencies as well as the public through meetings and online, in an online survey, to develop a plan that recognizes the need to preserve natural landscape in attempts to balance development with the shoreline area. Another element of design the team considered was experiences on the west side of the park. A key feature to the project is the viewing platform, a quiet space where people can observe birds and wildlife in a natural setting. The platform will launch from the shoreline and curve out over the water with views of the creek connection and connecting with the lake and wildlife habitat. Another feature is the park entrance off the Interurban Trail. That will see an update with identifiable artwork and a new paved entry, which you can see here as the park portal image. And then the pathways themselves also provide different experiences and textures. So we'll have a variety of asphalt pathways, gravel, boardwalks, as well as mulch trail systems that weave through and around the ponds and green space on the west side. After securing all the necessary permits earlier this year, the city published a call for bids in March. On April 15th, we received three construction bids, all of which were over the project budget. The lowest responsible bid came from Sunset Grill Construction at just over $2.2 million. The proposal and contractor were reviewed and determined responsive and responsible. If we include an 8% contingency, the total project cost is approximately $2.4 million. Here's what the timeline would look like going forward with the bid award. We would execute a contract in June, issue a notice to proceed this summer, and get underway with construction this summer and fall. Noting that the bids came in over budget, staff, staff worked to evaluate options for financing and other alternative approaches. Starting with our approved capital budget for the project, we have about 1.5 million. That figure includes design, permitting, administration, and construction. We secured contributions from the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office, Primera Blue Cross, and the City of Edmonds, as you can see here. To close the funding gap, we proposed reallocating CIP funds from other projects that were either completed under budget or not currently moving forward. We also proposed using the available CIP and end funding balance. In total, we would be reallocating a little over $1 million to cover construction, construction administration, and 8% contingency. So with all that being said, and the numbers you have before you, here are some of the alternative approaches that were discussed regarding the completion of this project. So obviously, one option is to move forward with the award and construct this summer and fall. Another alternative would be to reject all the bids that were received and rebid the project either as a whole or segment, segment the project into kind of a land or water component and advertise those individually. The drawbacks of, the drawbacks of rebidding or segmenting are, we don't really know if bids would come in any lower in the coming years. And we haven't seen any trends or indications that pricing would go down. Second, there's a chance that we risk some of our secured funding from our partners. We'd have to issue a couple of extensions and work with those funding partners on renewals, which are not necessarily guaranteed. And third, we would need to review the permit extension with the Army Corps of Engineers for the nationwide permit that we have associated with the work to, to complete the project. If the city were to rebid and it segment the project into land and water component, components, and for instance, if we were only be, if we were only able to afford to move forward with one piece, that would be considered a scope change with regards to our recreation and conservation funds. And so the, that would have to be reevaluated, the amount of funds that we could be awarded or allocated, because essentially, we'd be reducing the scope from the original grant agreement. Despite the cost increase, staff are proposing to move forward with the project based on the fact that it is a community project, a community priority from the Master Plan. Continuing forward also maintains our current secured funding with our partners, the current permits that we have approved already and in hand. And then it also takes into account the fact that we've already spent around $400,000 in design. So tonight, we're here to discuss, but are recommending authorizing the city manager to amend the budget as proposed, adding about a million, a little over a million dollars to the project for a total of $2.5 million for construction and contingency, as well as award and execute the construction contract with Sunset Grill LLC for the Ballenger Viewing Trails and Platform, in an amount not to exceed $2.211902.63 in a form for a contract that's been reviewed by legal counsel on both parties. And we can do that via the Consent Council, the Consent Calendar on June 5. And with that, I will take any questions that you have.
Councilmember Salmore?
So I'll, I'll save the bad question. Want versus need, and I know it's a priority, but we just got done with roads, you know, and that's a priority too. And this is kind of more of a want. And so can you go back and, and walk us through, it went up one, 1 million, where's my notes? Sorry, it's on the other side. It was 1,533 dollars or something over budget. But how much do we have from funds that haven't been spent? And how much did we get from Blue Cross, Edmonds, and, did I write down Army Corps? Adjustment, oh, it is 1,35,593, right? So is that, can you just kind of explain, were those monies that weren't spent on other projects, were they already allotted maybe to something else?
So you're talking about the, the amount that we're requesting to add to the budget?
Yeah.
Okay. So those funds were CIP funds that were from projects that either were not going to go forward due to, for instance, Evergreen Four and Five, which we had grant applications to do additional work in our CIP, and that was not going to be funded. So we utilized those funds to support this project. In the fall of last year, we bid Evergreen Three, the turf field, which was also over budget. And we currently aren't able to move forward from, with that currently. So we've pulled a little bit of funds from there to support this as well moving forward. So it was an evaluation of what projects do we have listed in the CIP and what projects are going to move forward, as well as pulling what we have for like end fund balances as well.
So the three, about how much was that for Bill Three, Four, and Five?
That we, that we reallocated or?
Councilmember Salmore, can you turn on your?
I was just wondering, does that get close to the million dollars?
I'm sorry.
Oh, does that get those, the three playfield, the budget that we're not using for those, does that get close to the million dollars?
So we're combining all of, we're combining funds from Evergreen Three as well as Evergreen Four and the end fund balance to get to the million dollars that we're trying to reallocate to support Ballenger.
Yeah, and that's exactly the perfect question. I just didn't know, are we there?
Yes, with what we have proposed here tonight, yeah.
Anyone else? Councilmember Woodard?
If we could stay on that line of reasoning, I, so I'm following as well. These are the monies that are, you can only use them in this way. I mean, the list that we already have, it was a funding priorities, we put that forward. It comes back, nope, this was funded, this wasn't funded, this was, I'm all over the board, right? But I'm just trying to make sure, like, this money can't be used any other way, is what I'm saying. So that's sitting on it versus reallocating it, there's no real loss, if you will, because Evergreen Three wasn't funded. So it's not like, well, one day it will be funded, it just wasn't funded. And it does not look like that's going to happen. So that money can only be used for that list. That's where I'm going with it. I'm trying to remember the list that we had in front of us to begin with, as opposed to going, well, wait a minute, what if we put it somewhere else and we scrap this whole thing? You know, you know what I mean? I'm just trying to make sure things on the list. I just remember there was a list. I don't know if that's helpful.
Are you, yeah, you referring to the capital improvement program?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, the, most of the funds that were taken are impact fees, their park impact fees were utilized originally, we budgeted for Evergreen Three.
Yeah.
And so we, there wasn't enough money to do that project. So we're realizing that why have those monies sit?
Yes.
And we can't do it anyway right now until more of that money comes in. And so when more of those monies come in, we'll be able to kind of backfill that amount to Evergreen. So it's really just kind of shifting money to where it's needed right now instead.
And again, the more money coming in is the impact fees.
Right.
Which can't happen until it's.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I'm like, so if it's sat there, it would just be sitting there. So really, we're trying to say, let's activate this money.
Exactly.
Otherwise, it's like we're not pipe dreaming it, but we're like, well, soon my ship will come in, as opposed to this one's almost there, but we need your fuel. Is what I'm kind of hearing, right? We're not gonna, we're not taking anything off of the list, we're just not funding it.
Exactly.
And then hopefully, this falls off because it's going to be done. Right? I'm jumping around, I'm not giving any hard numbers here.
No, you're, you're.
You're not following your man, come on.
You're following our line of thinking. You are, exactly.
Yes. Yeah, I'm just trying to make sure that this money, its sole purpose is to be activated. And so we had a plan, but the reality is the matching money didn't come in, doesn't see a pathway to that money coming in, so let's. see a pathway to that money coming in, so let's activate that money by switching it over here where there was a gap, now a million dollars. I don't quite understand why there's a million dollar gap, but that's probably somebody else's question here to get us there, because I'm just full of knowledge today. But I think I'm on the right path. This money, it either sits there or we activate it, and we're saying, let's activate it.
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone else? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you both, appreciate the presentation, and I appreciate the questions thus far. I guess I would love to just have you speak a little bit more, because I have had two questions recently about Evergreen specifically, and when's that work starting, and what are, so we're talking about reallocating funds that we had planned to use for that, because we don't have enough funds to actually undertake the work at this point in time. But in terms of timeline for those projects, obviously, we don't know, but I guess I would love anything you can give the community in terms of what that means about the viability of those projects in the long run. And just, I guess, maybe review for folks what those are, because I think we talk about these things, like, everybody knows what Evergreen 3 and Evergreen 4, 5 is, but I know that is not necessarily universally understood.
Yeah, absolutely. So Evergreen Playfield Number 3 and Tennis Courts Project was something that we've been working on for a while that we have grant funding for. There's a Land Water Conservation Fund grant and a Youth Athletic Facilities Grant, two of those. So one for tennis court, one for Evergreen 3. And so that was to install infield turf, new fencing, new lighting on the baseball diamond, and then a new equipment room that would also be able to be utilized for machinery that's down there for the turf fields. And then also, it's for the tennis courts to be able to resurface those, new posts, new lighting, new fencing, and all those kinds of things, and accessibility act, really the big thing is accessibility, is trying to make sure that we can get people there. So that project, there's also the Evergreen Playfields Number 4 and Number 5. We just did Number 5's lighting, so we applied for lighting for Number 4, and we ranked just outside of the funded category. So the good news is that that money that we budgeted for would be available to move to this, and that was, I, top of my head, I think it was like $175,000 for that. But then additionally, there was another project that we applied for, Evergreen Playfields 4 and 5 through the COAF Fund, and they based that on factors, where they scored that, that we did not necessarily score that high on, so we did not get that funding either in this legislative cycle. But, so that, matching funds would be available as well. And so that's what we're trying to do, is just gather up ones that we weren't going to use and point them towards this project. And we really weighed, honestly, Evergreen and Ballenger Viewing Platform against each other to figure out, and really, the internal argument that we made too is just like the permitting that went into the Ballenger Viewing Platform and Trails Project was extremely onerous, it's a 12 to 18-month process, and a lot of staff time, and to go through that again would be very difficult. But, you know, additionally, having all of these partnership monies involved and losing those, right, is, would be a real negative to the project of losing those $300,000 as well as the $500,000 grant. Evergreen's timeline is more flexible, the federal timeline related to Land Water Conservation Fund potentially, if we get the extension that we were already talking to them about, they would give us an additional few more years to get that project done. So it's definitely not dead, it's just that we're currently reworking it and trying to get pieces of it done and get an extension and have some of the funding get backfilled by development, hopefully.
Thank you. No, super, super helpful, thank you, Jeff. I appreciate the explanation, and I think it's helpful for folks to try to wrap their heads around, I mean, these grants, which is, you know, the way we fund, you know, a lot of the work that we do around the community, and appreciate all of the work that staff does to make those happen, are oftentimes very complex and, you know, lead us to have to make decisions that might look different if we just were looking at a pool of funds that were ours and ours alone. And so, appreciate that. I wanted to ask also as well, if you guys had had a chance to see, we received an email from Dale Jeremiah with some concerns about the project, and I think in particular, there's this first photo that he says is looking north from the location of the proposed viewing platform, which is lovely green space, but that's, you know, about the extent of what is there. I guess I'm curious if you've seen that, and if that, from your perspective, is an accurate location of the viewing platform and the view that will be seen from that location?
I mean, I think I saw it right where the meeting started, but yeah, no, I'm not sure. Dale says it's a picture of that spot, that I'm sure it is. It looks kind of uphill to me from that point, but I think it's pretty flat out there, and there's not a lot of elevation change, so there definitely is vegetation. We, as part of the design process, when we talked about the viewing platform, same thing as the core project with the flyover kind of pathway there, we talked a lot about view lines, and trying to make sure that from all different portions that we're not blocking with vegetation, new trees that we're planting that you can see through from the road, you can see through from the senior center, and things like that. And so I think that's what we were aiming for. This, the location, and the location has changed since the original master plan. The location was supposed to be originally on the far west corner, and there were some issues with that, even when it was originally proposed with some of the neighbors that lived there, of having a viewing platform, you know, 30 feet from their, potentially their dock, or things like that, right? And so we really tried taking that into account when we did the design phase. We had quite a few public meetings for this project, and we talked to RPAC every single meeting in the run-up to this, and got a lot of input about those locations. And so there was a lot of consideration with which one to take into account, the one further west or the one closer to Hall Creek. And pretty much overwhelmingly, from what I remember, it was chosen the one closer to Hall Creek, really because of the ecological benefit. It was really just trying to, so much more that you could see in that location than being on the far west side that was very open, and there wasn't as much benefit ecologically to being, you know, immersed into that kind of piece. But I do understand his concerns. The actual fishing pier is more of an active space as far as trash goes to, you have fishermen out there, you have bait and all the kinds of things like that that create waste. The viewing platform is not designed to be for fishing, it has some design elements built into it too, to help discourage some of those things, and not to mention that it's in about three feet of water in portions, it's going to be hard to fish some of that, and there's a lot of lilies in that area, so those kind of things help discourage that kind of activity. But I'm just not sure what the other comment, oh.
Will there be good things to view before we move to the pathway? Because I think the pathway is important too, but like, I guess I am, like, I look at that and I'm like, I mean, it's beautiful, but like, if that's the view from the platform, that's the view from the park? Like, I guess I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, so the platform puts you out on the water, right?
So it'll go through there?
It launches from that point.
So if you turned around, you'll see the lake, and then it goes out, and it'll curve out onto the lake, and so you're going to have a view of basically where Hall Creek discharges into the lake.
From the side that we can't see currently.
Right.
Okay.
And so I think it's going to be a really enjoyable experience. We actually had our design team get out in a kayak and take pictures from those points. We have all those photos of what it would look like when you're out there, and that was kind of part of the design process too. So it was a really thoughtful process, and well-attended, and a lot of discussion and input. So, I mean, I don't have any heartburn about the location whatsoever, I think it's going to be a really enjoyable experience. But the pathways discussion as well, we, you know, we obviously want a pathway on the east side of the flyover boardwalk, that's, I think, one of the photos just showed here, is trying to connect that pathway to the playground, and absolutely, that's something that's not in the budget, it's actually in the plan, so it is something that's in the Ballenger Park Plan to connect that, but it's not something that we have funding for right now, and it's just grass at this point. We have had the design team take a look at it just casually, and it's going to be boardwalks, so it's going to be very expensive to connect those two pieces, because it's really a wetland low area. You look out there at wet time, right, in the winter or anything, it's just flooded in that section. So it's going to be a difficult endeavor.
I walked through there recently, and it was very squishy.
It is.
I guess, I think it calls for, the plan calls for, like, mulch trails, right? Is that, I mean, so we don't even have budget to put mulch down to make it slightly less squishy?
I think that we could mulch some areas, and we've talked about that, about trying to guide people through that area.
Right, because I think otherwise, we're all taking our own paths. I will say, that's probably not great for the park either.
And well, there is some benefit to that, it's just bowed lawn through there right now, so allowing people to choose their own path is sometimes good, but the mulch is going to wash away, so we're going to have to replace it consistently right now. But that was part of the west side design, is that we have an asphalt pathway, the west-east connection point that goes from the inner urban all the way to the bridge, the vehicle bridge on the north side, right? So that's asphalt. And originally, we wanted asphalt to go all the way down to the viewing platform, and it's not possible with kind of the, you know, the actual ground and the, and the design process kind of lent us a lot of information, and it's going to be a series of boardwalks also, just on the pathway to get down to the lake. Because it may seem dry in a lot of different times of year, but because of the wetlands and what we've discovered, that which certain areas are wetlands year-round, and they're classified as wetlands, then we have to approach it with getting people over them more. So there are individual boardwalk pieces along that path too, that definitely escalated the cost as well. And so I think there's like 14, no, 12, how many whitecrafts are there?
Oh, there's four of those, and then there's the viewing platform itself that extends out, so that's a boardwalk section.
So then there's, and then from that point, there's going to be gravel down and around, and then there's also that woodchip kind of pathway, nature trail between the ponds, and that's always been designed that way. So definitely, you know, once, a lot of things are conceptual, and then once you start getting information and some, you know, data on what the ground looks like and the, you know, is it going to hold the weight, is it, are we going to allow to do that even? And then all these decisions change, and then the bidding environment changes a lot of things too. And so we bid this soon after, I think, the, all during tariff talk and things like that. So it's a lot of things that we don't understand or know necessarily the way people bid things, but they all were quite a bit higher than our engineers' estimate.
Yeah, I was going to say, the way of everything, it seems like lately. I will say, I just, I think there was a mention of like going out to the site, and I will say, I think whenever we can do that, especially as things shift during projects, I think particularly for recreation and parks and the planning commission, I think those are really valuable field trips. And I'd love to be invited on some field trips, I keep waiting for somebody to plan a field trip. But anyway, I do think actually seeing the space when you're making decisions can be incredibly helpful, and I know sometimes there's more and less familiarity with different places that we're making decisions. So appreciated the public comment. I would be supportive of not putting it on the consent agenda, so there's some opportunity to continue discussion, and if folks have other thoughts, that we can discuss it again at the next meeting. But that answered my questions, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question, maybe for the city manager possibly, but the first question is, well, before I get to the question, I really like the project, I want it to go forward, I like the grant money, the only question is the money we need to add to it. So to the city manager, or at all, where are we getting the extra $1,035?
Yeah, those are, those funds are coming from other projects like Evergreen, Jeff talked about a little bit, that we weren't going to complete. We had the budgeted funds in our budget for those projects, but they were matching, so they would match grants, and those grants we didn't, we weren't awarded. So we're going to shift the funding over to complete this one.
So what would we need for us to come up with the other money lacking?
Yeah, those are all our funds, mostly impact fees, if I'm, yeah, correct, it's all impact fees that are sitting in our account right now.
So this would not take any money out of our budget, then?
No, it's just shifting it to a different project.
So this is a budget shift versus?
It's not new money.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's really important. Okay, I really appreciate it, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Woodard?
I hate to revisit it with my wonderful elocution last time, but nonetheless, now we've established it's the capital improvement project list. That list is ranked, yes? Okay, so that's what I thought, so I was trying to get there. Everything else, scrap that, just start right here. So with it being ranked, and I appreciate that I want to see this project get finished as well, and that the monies aren't new, we're just going to shift it over, and it looks like it cleans it up nicely, but in the spirit of lists and rankings, I'm curious whether or not some of those things that are at the lower end of the list would be fully funded by some of these same openings that didn't get their match. Now, I don't need that answer tonight, but if we're going to take it off the consent calendar, I would like to know, not just how this is going to fill a gap, but I'd like to know, well, wait a minute, did I miss an opportunity to say, well, this was number 57 on the list, it was never getting funded, but it's exactly the right amount, today's your day, 57, and that's not what I'm saying we'll do, but that's the type of thing I was trying to get at, is like, what's my actual trade-off here? Because that money isn't new money, but maybe there's the pipe dream that became almost reality because of this opportunity. And big premise there is that my presumption would be that additional $1 million that we need to finish this project that I'm all for, maybe there's something else, funding mechanisms that we haven't explored yet, because this one's right here. And I know you probably have explored all that, and that's what I'd want to hear, so that when we have this conversation next time, people know, no, this wasn't just an easy one-for-one, a lot went into this, because I know that to be true, but I just want to make sure that folks know we're asking those questions.
I suppose the city manager has the CIP ranked sheet in front of him right now, but I know for a fact that number one project is the Recreation Pavilion, and so that is obviously out of reach, right? They're all projects we're actively working on, it's just park impact fees can't be utilized for facilities projects, it has to be for parks-related, so those are all off the board. And then there's also other type projects in CIP, right? It can be utilized not only just for parks, but also for CIP, general fund CIP can be utilized for streets, right? If there's REIT funding, and there's other types of projects. So this, these are pretty much restricted funds to just those park projects. And so Evergreen and Ballenger Viewing Platform and Trails were both ranked very high on that list priority-wise, I don't know off the top of my head, but I know that we were definitely weighing between those two, and that's why we pursued them in the beginnings, we're trying to take off those really important projects. And they all take a lot of combining of funds to get done. And so those relationships we built to get Primera to give us the money, right, for this project, and then Edmonds to actually pitch in $200,000 and want to partner and improve that for their residents, but, so those are years-long efforts, and really, it's in reflection of that priority list.
That's what I wanted to hear, and not me personally, I wanted to make sure that our residents hear that, that again, because the way it's presented, it just sounds like, hey, this money didn't go there, we could put it here. And I know that wasn't the case, I just didn't have it in my head today, but we got closer there, and you gave me the answer that I was hoping we would hear, is this makes the most sense, otherwise it just sits there and nothing can be done, and that doesn't make any sense. We're trying to make dollars.
Mayor Per田, well?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and just to add on a little, so as you point out, there's a list, the Evergreen projects don't fall off the list because they're not funded, they just weren't matched, therefore, they stay on the list, we just got to figure out how to fund them in the future. Another point of impact fees, correct me if I'm wrong, but impact fees have an expiration date, we have to use it by a certain, you know, within a certain number of years, and if we don't use it within 10 years, we lose it, we have to send it back. And so we don't want to find ourselves in a position where we're not tapping those funds because another project wasn't funded, so this is a perfect way to shift and be able to cover, I mean, you know, and another point is, if we delay any longer on this, I mean, look at how much those costs are going exponentially. If we delay and go back to, you know, out to bid again, more than likely, even within a six-month period, we're going to see those costs go up hundreds of thousands of dollars more again. And further, we have, we risk, as this pointed out, we risk losing $800,000 from dedicated, that has been dedicated to this project from others, and we can't, you know, if we don't use it this year, by the end of this year, we very likely will lose a substantial portion of it, and potentially all of it. So this is something we do need to move forward with and make happen. It's a great project, you know, went through a number of years of planning, community outreach, working together to put this beautiful brainchild together, big beautiful park? Anyway, I'm just sorry. It's, but it's, it's, you know, all the different pieces of the master plan for Ballenger Park are coming together finally, bit by bit, but, you know, it was a $15 million dream at the time, which has gone up since 2015. 2015, right? But it's, it's, it's turning out to be an incredible jewel for this community, really excited about it, so, thank you.
Councilmember Somer?
Well, let's go back to the, the first part, where you said we have the funding for it, we're just moving the funding from a project that didn't get funded into this, and to me, and it's been about 17 years on this project, getting rid of the golf course and everything, and I like the way that you explained it, and the way I understand it, is either we do it now, or it probably won't ever get done, because of all the different things that we had to go through with the permitting and the design. And I still, I swear, we talked about what Dale was talking about, you guys had brought pictures or something, when you talked about redesigning it, because this looks so familiar to me, and I, I, maybe, Dale, if you want to go back into a park and rec presentation, and look, because I know that was discussed, because it looks so familiar, but Jeffy reminded me of when we talked about walking through the wetness, and, and everything to get there, so I hope, Dale, that answers your question, but thank you for answering all our questions, to kind of get us to where we need to be, is, do we want this? And it's either now, or probably never, so.
So, do we want to keep it on the consent calendar, or, so we're gonna vote on it? I can't hear you.
I was, I was hoping we would take it off, I thought we had.
Okay, it's okay to take it off.
I was supporting Councilmember Murray's request to take it off, technically.
Okay.
I was on board with that.
I mean, yeah, I was gonna say, all it takes is one of us, so, I mean, it's easier to just schedule, so folks know they can come and talk about it, versus put it on the consent, and have me pull it off then, so.
We may all end up both for it, but that's, that's not the point, yeah.
All right. Okay, so, it will be off the consent calendar, we'll be talking about it, and then, so, we can, are we, anyone else with any questions or comments? All right. Then, we are, and you have nothing else to add? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you next time. All right, so next is a review of the June 5 meeting agenda, which, I was there, but I forgot to click it. All right, it looks like it's gonna be a long meeting. So anyone have any, Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. Question, maybe for the city manager, and I think it would be helpful to just clarify for folks, because it came up at our last meeting, we have this stated for public comment, you know, it says that, you know, public, general public comment is for things that aren't on the agenda, but we don't ever make space during agenda items for people to speak to specific agenda items, which is where I think there gets to be confusion, and then people, yeah, I get frustrated. So I guess, can we just, like, make sure that folks understand, if they want to come and give public comment, whether that's general public comment, about something not on the agenda, or specifically about one of the agenda items, how that'll work?
So, a little bit different between work sessions and regular meetings. During work sessions, general public comment is for public comment on any topic, right? Doesn't matter if it's on the agenda or not, that is the time period when people can make public comment. During regular meetings, the public comment section is for items not on the agenda, typically. But then after each item, regardless of whether it's a public hearing, we should make sure that we ask if anybody has any comment, because somebody may be in the audience and say, and excluding online, because we have to have people sign up early for the online process, give people the opportunity, after they've heard the discussion, if they want to make a comment. So we'll try to make that a little bit more clear on the agendas for folks. We've also changed a little bit our signup sheet, for when people come in, and they sign up to speak, whether they are speaking on a specific topic on the agenda, or it's just general public comment.
I think that sounds phenomenal, thank you for, for reviewing that, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So then, next is council comments. Does anyone have any council comments? Oh, we have to move back to where?
Just to the next, the next agenda, meeting agenda. I know some council members may have questions that maybe could just be real quickly reminded, remind us about the ordinance repealing the outdated municipal code regarding burglar alarms, or, just to remind us what, what that's about, and make sure that we're all comfortable with that on the consent agenda.
Yeah, that one is a code section that's been in our, our code since the 70s, and what it is, there used to be, not that many years ago, it's the 70s, the requirement that alarm companies, local alarm companies, contact the city, and give the city contact information for when a burglar alarm's going off at 2:00 in the morning, police could go and, you know, contact that person, get them to shut it off. That's really no longer the case, there no longer is really local alarm companies anymore, most of them are nationwide, and you can think, like, SimpliSafe, right? So all of those are monitored from a central location somewhere, but they're not here in Mount Lake Terrace. So this code really isn't operative anymore, and it doesn't really provide any use. We were placing that on the consent agenda, just to ensure that, or to, because it's more of a housekeeping item than anything else.
Okay, is everyone fine with that?
So you're not replacing it with anything, you're just, we're just getting rid of it?
Yeah, and it's, if we, one, we've had this in the code forever, and since things have transitioned to nationwide kind of monitoring services, nobody's followed it in any way. And, you know, whoever, SimpliSafe, they're not gonna contact each city and say, you know, call this person at SimpliSafe, it's just, it's monitored through the internet, something that didn't exist back then.
They usually contact you on your, your cellphone anyways. Okay, all right, are you, are you done with that one? Okay, great. So now, next is council comments. Anyone have any council comments? No, it's getting late. All right, then we're gonna.
I have a comment.
Oh, you do?
I do.
Okay.
Going way too fast. I just did. This, for the Ballenger Viewing, do we want to do this with each other, to go look at what it is that we need to look at, or, you know, what is a, what do we want to do? I know, we take it off the consent calendar, because we want to, some people want to go see.
If you want to go see it, you're welcome to go see it. Mayor Pretam Wal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and just to clarify, it's being taken off the consent calendar, but it will still be an item on the agenda that we will address. And so, yeah, if you wanted to go look at it individually, or, or I'm sure Dale would be happy to give you a tour of this, of the site, but, but yeah, so we have an opportunity between now and June 5, to be able to explore further the, the project.
Yeah, and I'd just like to mention on the record, if you do go, please no more than three, and any one of those three cannot contact any of the other members on, on the city council. Okay, thanks.
All right, anyone else? One, two, three. I'm gonna jurn.